Six oh one P M. Roll call.
Mayor.
President.
Councilor Reynolds. Here. Councilor Boggs.
Here.
Councilor Ser.
Here.
Councilor Pia.
Here. Approval of the agenda?
I'm looking for the agenda for my third.
Second.
Third.
Councilor Reynolds.
Yeah.
Councilor Boggs. Ser.
Yes.
Councilor Palia.
Yes.
There's nobody to address the council tonight unless you change your mind, somebody wants to talk. You still can. This is America. Guess not. We are not in compliance with our charter. Okay? After this election, we should be though. Regular city council meeting minutes. Any changes? Any directions?
I make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting for nine nineteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Councilor. Councilor Reynolds.
Yeah.
Councilor Boggs. Councilor Ser. Councilor Palia.
Yes.
Floyd Gallagher.
In your packets, you have a copy of the proposed calendar of holidays for this next calendar year. It includes the same holidays that we had the past couple of years.
Questions, comments? No? No questions, no comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Floyd's calendar.
Make a motion to approve the Floyd's calendar.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds.
Yeah.
Councilor Boggs. Councilor Ser.
Yes.
Councilor Palia.
Yes.
Next. Update from Future Foundations Family Center.
We have Julie Hidalgo here this evening, the director at Future Foundations. Our contract with them specifies that they will do a quarterly report. So we invited Julie to come and give you an update this evening.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here today. So I did present, I think all of you have the copy in front of you, but I do just want to touch on some things here. We have a contract now with Akama and they are, they have five employees that they're going to be providing for us. And they're going to be paying these employees to help us with the after-school program. So I thought that was very exciting for Future Foundations. We already have one, she's full-time, she's been helping us a lot. She's been doing a lot of the archiving because I've seen that a lot of the paperwork from the past was not, it wasn't scanned. It's all just in boxes and I'm afraid that for anything to happen to that. So we have her working on that. Another thing that I want to bring up is the Pro Start. We are, I'm working on a proposal for the Pro Start to go to elementary schools and do healthy taste tests. My only issue with that is transportation. We're trying to figure out how we're going to get the culinary arts students to the schools. So that's just one thing that's kind of stopping us there.
Maybe you could concentrate on Mesa View, which is right next door for now?
Yeah, so we're going to do Mesa View. The reason why I want to go further out like to Cubero is because I had a complaint from somebody there that the kids are making a mess with the salad bar. The salad bar is something good for the kids and I would hate for the salad bar to go away. My thing is the children from Cubero may have never, they might not have salad at home. So they probably don't know how to make their own salad. So I was thinking, what better than the culinary arts students to go and teach these kids how to use the salad bar, you know, the proper way to use it. Because I don't think anyone has ever shown them how to do that. That's my idea on that.
Have you contacted the schools on it?
So I, so my first thing was to meet with Edwina Heneman. She's the nutrition specialist here for the district. And then I met with Ms. Downey and I met with Mr. Weidner. And then today I met with Max, the superintendent. And I was explaining to him what, you know, what we're trying to do for the community. Not only that, but I wanted to incorporate the seniors. I wanted, I want to get all ages, you know, helping out with the healthy eating. I want, I asked Mr. Pettis if he would be okay if we could ask the seniors from the senior center to be involved with helping with the gardens at the schools. Because I don't know if you've seen, but the garden at Elan School is going down. It's, it's just, it's just a hoop house. And it's really sad to see that. And I was thinking, well, maybe we could have seniors involved and maybe do some kind of elective with the kids. But that's one thing that we need approval and making sure the background checks are done.
And you do have some, they already have background checks and stuff that are working through the schools now.
Yeah, yeah, so it's really unfortunate though because a lot of the teachers are too busy.
Oh, you ain't whistling Dixie, I married one.
Yeah, they're too busy to help out with the gardens, you know?
You ain't whistling Dixie.
And there have been some that did try to keep up with it. So I'm thinking if we can get the teens, the high school students to do a presentation at the senior center, maybe we can convince the seniors how important it is to be involved with the community and then they can help out with the elementary school. That, so that's what I'm currently working on.
Questions? Anybody? Laura?
No.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you very much. Now what we've discussed today, I'll get on, I'll let you know. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Ah, nice. Updating on. Chief. Charles.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager and citizens. I was asked tonight to present where we, GPD's at, what we're doing. Like to, I gave a little, significant little discussion at the manager's coffee here a while back. I think we're doing great. And I'm saying that because the city, even though we've got the encumbrances with roads and everything, we're able to increase by two officers, a patrolman and a school resource officer, which I, I've got my lieutenants here, they're going to explain here in a bit what we're doing with that, with those resources, that you know, we're not just squandering it, we just want more people just because. So a couple of things. Year to date, we've got about 20,000 calls for service for the City of Grants PD. That translates into about six point three to four calls per officer per day. Every day, every shift, okay? So some days it's worse, some days it's not so bad. What does that mean? We, year to date, we've had about almost 500 arrests. Not every call garners an incident, not every call garners a, an arrest. But when we do get arrests, no matter domestic violences, their DWIs, whatever they are, those take time. Up until to recently, when we hired our last two officers, we've got three non-certified officers. We, now we're up to 20, including myself and lieutenants. Non-certified officers, well, I'm sorry, 20 sworn, let's put it that way. Three of those are non-certified. We, we had to hire those non-certified earlier this year and they're doing a great job. They're learning. Two of them now, all three, actually all three of them now are on the streets by on their own. They're, they're actually doing police work finally instead of just learning. They're still learning, but they're doing police work. So they're actually becoming assets for the city. Up until that time though, recently, what's, what was happening is they're, they're in training. So it hinders our training officers and it hinders them from actually doing the work of a cop. That 20,000 calls for service in the last nine months or so, it's 20,000 or so in the last nine months, I was explaining to the managers and to the, to the citizens that were there that the City of Grants Police Department has as many calls for service as Sebola County Sheriff, Malon PD and Akama PD combined. Those agencies combined have, I believe, 34 officers combined. We were doing with, with 18, with myself. Up until recently, we, we got the two, one's school resource officer and the other one's patrol, which we were able to hire a certified patrolman. I talked to you all about the dreams I wanted, you know, I, I gave each of you the book, Fixing Broken Windows. We talked a little bit about that, where I wanted to go. In that, we have gone in the direction of, I'm wanting to get a narcotics division, but that takes money. It takes money to hire people to do narcotics work and it takes money to do the buys, it takes. And so what we did is the lieutenants and myself came up with the idea of why not start doing some more directed patrol to some of our problem houses in the city? We're not, we're not, you know, being cruel or mean, we're just saying if you are, you've got issues here at this house, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and answer those issues. And so what we've done is we've started, we've got complaints on several different streets since I've been here. 600 Block of Jefferson, 100 Block of Rauch. Different, different places, Santa Marina. And some of you may know some of these places and some of these, but, so what we started doing as one gentleman is on a particular house, for instance, was complaining, complaining about the drug traffic, the traffic, the constant traffic in and out of the residence. And we've had several of those. Well, without narcotics division, the thinking was, well, how do we, how do we address that without violating their rights? We began using Mr. Winhorst. Anything that he sees that would be a code enforcement violation and then he's got to go talk to him, we send an officer with him to find out what we can get. Sometimes that doesn't garner anything, sometimes it does. But also we started doing is we, we're going to park outside the residence. We've got, one gentleman gave us a list of how many vehicles that were, 30 something vehicles, I believe, and the traffic all within just weeks. My Lieutenant Matisse and his crew, he's going to tell you a little bit more about that. We began focusing where that place was literally, you see just thugs outside of the yard all day long and you see the traffic in and out. And they were emboldened, now that place is quiet and everything. The residence still lives there and is still renting. We've also had residences where some of these people refused to want to come into the compliance with what our laws and ordinances are and they've actually decided to move. We've had a few of them.
That's a good thing, chief.
Well, and I'll say this, sir. It's not that we want to kick people out of Grants, but you know, I.
Just the drug dealers.
I'd like to say this though, you know, because a lot of people focus on, oh, we can prosecute poverty. And one thing I, is I was raised in poverty when I was a kid. We had a dirt floor, we had an outhouse at one point in my life. And what I'm saying is, guess what we didn't do? We didn't do crime. And so the people, the City of Grants, the homeowners, the homeowners, the business owners, they deserve people to be following the law. Because if we're going to do it, we, we want everybody to. And so what we're trying to do is bring it into a place where we're not violating rights, that is not what we're about. We are all about citizens' rights. We, we, as I, as I stated, Sebola County and those other two agencies, they've got more officers combined than us for, for, for less calls or as many calls as us. It's almost even, but they're less than us. And two of those agencies, I can tell you right now, only work, one Malon PD is talking about going to, to only two in the morning and the Sebola County Sheriff's Office only goes till two in the morning. Which means the citizens of Malon and the citizens of Sebola County out in, outside of Grants, the City of Grants are without law enforcement unless state police can send an officer from the Gallup area to come cover at night from two to seven or whatever time they come out. Now, I applaud the council for looking through and the city manager for looking through and how can we create an avenue to where the citizens are covered and we have this. And I am so happy that we're able to get those two officers. What I'd like to do now briefly is I've asked my two lieutenants to come. Again, Lieutenant Matisse is going to talk about the drive that Patrol's doing and what, what we're doing there. We're getting lots of positive feedback from the citizens about the Patrol Division. Lieutenant Chavis is going to talk about the Detective Division, the way we go in there and the school resource officer and what we're going there. So I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Matisse first. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager.
Welcome home again.
Welcome home again. So going back to what the chief's talking about on the, that fixing broken windows theory. We've tried that on a few houses, I'm going to say four because that's what we've actually been trying it on. And out of the four, I can say that all four were successful. I've met personally with each and every complaining party. I'm not going to name any names because a lot of that stuff goes to court, but I mean, when we see those complaints come in with these numerous vehicles and plate information it just gives us that extra leverage to use against these people. Because if we don't get that from the public, it's a lot harder for us to do our job. So with those complaints, when they come in and we act on those and like I said, he was talking about that one where we got all these vehicle descriptions, vehicle or descriptions of persons coming in and out of all day and all night, you know, all the hours. They're, they're constantly. Anyway, what Patrol's been doing with that is between their calls for service on the normal basis and running the traffic, that's part of their, their routine is they go by these houses and if there's any type of vehicles there or subjects there, they, they stop them. And on that reasonable suspicion that there's either illegal activity or narcotics traffic going on. And we're getting drug busts out of them, we're getting arrests, citations and we're pushing them. And the one house that we started with, they actually moved. The other two houses, I met with the people, they're actually next-door neighbors to these houses and they have zero traffic at this time. The fourth house that we've been working on, it's slowed down enough to where he can go outside and sit on his front porch again with his wife because they were terrified of going outside. So that one's almost coming to a complete end as well. We're still working on that one. But like I said, those four houses were kind of like a trial basis of what we're going to do in the future and it seems to be successful.
So for the citizens out there, if you've got traffic coming in and out in your neighborhood, make a phone call, they'll take care of it for you.
Make a phone call?
Make a phone call.
And what this person did was he wrote down dates and times and plates and man, that you just, it's unbelievable what that does for us in court. Because without that, our hands are kind of tied unless we get them red-handed, you know? But with that information, it gives us that leverage to, to do a really good job on that place.
That's fantastic. That's fantastic. Any questions for Lieutenant Matisse?
Good job, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, you're up. Tell me about the two rules, man.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, City Manager, Mayor. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lieutenant David Chavis with the Grants Police Department. I'm in charge of the Detective Division, also in charge of the SRO. We are very pleased and we thank the council for giving us that position this year. We hope to get another one, as well as the school board as well, been working real close with Max Perez and he's really on board to get that other one going as well. The school itself has really been picking up. We've had recently, the biggest thing going right now, this week alone, we've had five either vocalized or attempted suicides at the high school alone. So this is an issue that we're having to deal with. We've also have a big problem with vapes right now at the school. In fact, today, two had to be hospitalized for taking something out of a vape pen that another student had provided to them. These kids are taking hits off of stuff, they don't even know what it is. I, I'm amazed the fact they do that, but it's actually happening, so we need to really address this. Again, that's why we're really looking forward to increasing the SRO program as well as Detective Division right now. We do have a lot of cases on the Detective Division, mostly property crimes. Fortunately, we haven't had any major cases to deal with recently. So the detectives are able to focus on those, on those property crimes. And like Chief said earlier, the big thing here and what we're really looking forward to doing is the community policing and that goes in hand in hand with that broken windows. Like you guys have been in front of that book. For those of you who don't know what that is, basically it's addressing the smaller crimes and dealing with them before they become big crimes. And it's a really neat philosophy and it goes hand in hand with community policing is what we're, since Chief got here, he's been pushing that and I think it's working really well. You're starting to see the effects of it now. You can visibly see them by going down the streets and talking to people. People are a lot happier and that's the focus of the chief is he wants us to make the citizens to where they feel happy and comfortable and safe in their homes and that's our goal.
Any questions for Lieutenant Chavis?
I ain't got a question. I know you, you said something about the high school, the vaping and all that stuff. Do you have any, do you have any, any problems at, at middle school?
Yes, sir, in fact, we just had a.
Middle school's probably worse.
The middle school actually, once we get that other SRO, you're going to find out the stats there are probably going to be higher than the high school, if not equivalent to it. Just because they're younger doesn't mean they don't have the problems or the issues arising. In fact, Lieutenant Matisse responded to a call the other day where a student tore a classroom up going through a crisis. So it's still happening and yes, in fact, if you think about the, the last most recent suicide of a juvenile we had, it was from the, the middle school there.
Elementary.
Oh, it was elementary, I'm sorry, elementary school. So it happens at young ages, it's, it's not just at the high school.
Yeah, but can you read all, all the, all the current general reading every day? There's some kid in the, the third grade with a handgun yesterday or the day before.
Yeah, we're not seeing the weapons so much at the school, but there are the issues. Unfortunately, in this area here.
Lack of parenting there, Fred.
And unfortunately, in this area here, we see a lot of the grandparents raising the children. And so the children don't have that connection to the parents or the parenting that they should have. So that in itself is an issue that we're going to be facing pretty soon.
That's a lack of parenting.
Is there a lot of bullying in school?
Yes, sir.
If you teach them about guns, they're not curious and they don't go get them.
That suicide.
The bullying.
That was a result of that.
Right, and the bullying is not just like, you know, little Timmy telling little Johnny, hey, you know, I don't like you, you look funny, your nose is funny, whatever. It's very prominent now on social media. That's the strongest point that we're seeing at this point is electronic. And it's, and it's, believe it or not, it has a big effect on these children because that's, when we were younger, we, we hang out what we hang out with and we only, the people that are around us were the only ones that really affected us because we didn't have that social media connection. Children now, that's what they grow up with, that social media connection and they're getting it from, kids are getting phones at two that I know of, two years old, they're giving them phones to play games and stuff. So that's social media.
That's so they don't have to parent them. Period. That's so they only hear, take this, go play a game, get away. I mean, I don't know. It's sad. You know, they regulate cigarettes, they regulate all this stuff, but they don't regulate them games and them phones. And I guarantee you, that's 90% of your problem. It's right there in their hand. Right there.
Well, look at us, even as older people, we.
Step up, please, step up.
How much do we, are we attached to our phones now?
I try not to be. And when I'm out of politics no more, I will not have one of these. I guarantee you that.
Mr. Mayor, don't tell me that you have, forgot your phone somewhere and go, oh crap.
Yeah, I had. I dropped it down the chute over at the, at the Solid Waste Authority. And you know what's crazy? I went down and got it, it was my old flip phone. And it still worked like a joke, you know how deep that chute is? It went all the way down, bounced on the concrete into the truck. I went down crawling in the truck, I got it out, the one thing was is that the outside screen where I had a picture of Jake didn't work no more. It was the best phone I ever had, until they hacked it. This one here, I've already had to replace it twice because it can't handle being dropped. Thank God for each of you. What were you going to say back there, Ms. Peterson? Come on up to the mic.
I have a question.
Well, come on up to the mic, please, identify yourself.
I think my voice is loud enough.
Okay, identify yourself.
My question is, would schools be allowed to purchase and install jammers within the buildings or would that be an invasion of privacy?
No, actually, the Farmington area has instituted after that shooting over there they had at their school a couple of years ago, they, they've, they've started doing a couple of things like that. So it's not, it's not an invasion, it's a cost, it's, it's a cost though. And so that would be up to the school district. Again, the school is pitching in for our resource officer.
You bet they are.
And they have the money to pitch in for a second. And I'm not here to try to pitch you guys for a second one right now, but we have an opportunity. And I know the budget is tight this year, but I think that, that second one, when, even when we can do that, that would be something that would be beneficial all the way around.
To the community, definitely.
So.
How does that work right now with one officer?
Well, she, she is only at, that officer is stationed at the high school and she stays plenty busy with that. The functions at the high school, the color of the high school. So the Patrol Division is still having to answer calls to the other schools. So if and when we can expand out that second officer, depending on the call volume, and we'll work it out here with the lieutenant because his division is in charge of that program. We'll find out, can we send the school resource officer to the elementary schools to drop in and start getting a report? And one of the things, the issues, I mean, they're primarily there for the bullying to deal with that with the kids when they, when they want to talk to the officer and everything. But another thing that we're, we're doing too is, guess who buys drugs? Kids. Kids buy drugs and they buy them from drug dealers, right? And, and, and so that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to get, use those, that resource officer and in the future one hopefully, as, as a resource and for intelligence that would come back to the department and figure out where we're getting. I mean, we're doing it now through Lieutenant Matisse's team. We're, we're affecting change there, good positive change. But going into the future, I really believe that the school resource officer program is going to really help us. Another thing, another thing we've been doing is the traffic safety program. Of course, we've got, the City of Grants has a grant that we get from the state in New Mexico. I think it's about 16,000 a year. Well, what we started utilizing this last year was eighteen, nineteen, the fiscal year is the county's traffic safety program. Because that's there for all of us and so the first part of our year, I was using just that money. And so for the month of November, December, we did a super blitz on the City of Grants and the guys, of course, it's, it's Christmas time, so they want to make extra money, so they're out there in force. And so it was great and they got extra money. And then toward the latter, early, around March, April or whatever it was, we started utilizing our grant and now we just finished it up today, today's last day, right? And so then it'll turn over to another fiscal year. But that traffic safety, get, I mean, we get warrants, we get suspended licenses, we just get all kinds of stuff. What, you know, what are you doing in this neighborhood and you live in Malon, you know? At night, I'm talking, you know what I mean?
Too far to get on board.
And so we're trying, we're trying to utilize that for intelligence and to, to tell, because guess what? These burglars, these guys that are stealing cars, they drive around looking for opportunity. And so if, and the problem is, is in the past, what we've had is we'll have two guys on, on shift. If one of those guys gets an arrest, the other guy has to stay loose and, and, unless he's got an emergency call. But a lot of times if the subject's combative, that ties up both officers for a little bit because our jail is in Malon, so they got to bring them to the PD to book. And so when you're not seeing them out, I'm not seeing the cops out of the street. Again, 20,000 calls to this date and they're not, like the county, the county counts their prisoner transport, transports from Rudoso as their arrest stats or not Rudoso, but from Hobbs or Clayton or Las Trusas or wherever, those are their arrest stats. And they both, they build up their stats by kind of, our guys really are going, chasing the radio all day long and they're busy. And so I just want to, just let, let you all know that, that, and the good citizens of the City of Grants and Sebola County know that the Grants Police Department, I came in promising accountability and professionalism and, 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 that the people of Grants can be proud of. And I think we're, we're getting there, you're beginning to see it. I've had nothing but good rapport from citizens that are constantly coming and just, you know, whereas a while back, it was, it was mixed and then before that, it was a lot of negative. The City of Grants, I believe, can be proud of its department, I think we have a good crew. And we're building that, we're keeping guys accountable and that's what we're doing.
Anything else for the chief?
No.
Thank you guys very much.
Good work. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Lieutenants, thank you guys very much. I appreciate what you guys do every damn day. Be safe, the number is up to 34 now. Okay, 34 cops shot this year, two more yesterday. Lost 17 in Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria, every place else all over the world. So be safe, guys, please. Forward recommendation. Stranger?
Hi.
Hello stranger, what's happening?
I brought backup.
I brought backup, girl.
I'm Tina Hadamio, this is Cecilia, we're with the.
I'm Tina Hadamio, this is Cecilia, we're with the cemetery board, and we wanted proposed fee schedule changes that we have. I'm sure you guys have them in your packet, is this on? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
So, what we're doing is just basically raising the prices of the open and closed standard plot, and the open and closed of the urn plot, and the weekend fees. And you can see the, on the second one, the cemetery pricing breakdown for a standard plot, how much it takes the City of Grants to open the grave, to close the grave, and then the same for the urn plot and the Saturday funeral, burial.
What's the deal about changing the child as a different color?
Uh, when we discussed it, it just...
Because there is a difference?
There's a difference, we say...
A very big difference?
We say child, and some people consider a child to be eleven years old, and they're bigger than me. Uh-huh, so, that's why.
You'd be fine right there. Questions? Sidney? Manny? Fred? Yeah, I knew you had a question.
I knew Fred would have one.
It's why I skipped, Rick, we'll come back here.
You contacted all these people?
I did contact them, O'Shea is the one who got all the pricing for us.
O'Shea's awesome.
You know, when I was there, I contacted a whole bunch of them too, so it's...
Pretty cool. Anything else, Rick?
Yeah, so the reason for additional costs is primarily because of the labor it takes to maintain...
Right.
Not only that, but our prices are so low that we've got them bringing them from Illinois and every place else to bury them here.
Yes.
Okay? That's ridiculous. I mean, so, and people, believe it or not, that's happening, they're bringing them from all over to bury them here because our prices are a lot cheaper, believe it or not, so...
Okay, I got a question, so if we find out that people are coming in from out of state or whatever, and just using us because we're less expensive, can we charge them more?
We already did that.
We already did.
We already changed that.
You did already?
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
We already do, out of county.
Out of county.
Out of county, they pay more.
And that's twenty-five hundred.
And it's still, they throw them down. Throw them down a little bit. So, let's pleasure the council. Do we have to, wait a minute, do we have to do this by ordinance? I believe we do.
We haven't done the task.
Uh, let's check on that, so bring it back at our next meeting, next month, but let's check on it, if we don't need an ordinance, then we'll vote on it then, and if we do need an ordinance, let's have the ordinance prepared and ready to go that night, so that way, along with that, publish that. Okay? So, we might have to wait another month, but let's just check on it, if we don't need the ordinance, then we'll vote on it next month, if we do...
I don't think we do that.
Yeah, let's check on it, just to make sure that we're not violating any state laws that would come back and haunt me, okay? I mean, I think it's a good idea to raise the prices up, right? I think we gotta, we can't lose money. And we're losing money. Any other questions for Tina and Cecilia? Thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you.
Come back, we'll let you know. Thank you. Laura, your report?
In your packets, you have a written report, I'd like to highlight a few things. You also have a handout of our grocery receipts revenue history, and we like to look at that periodically, so that we can see how our businesses are doing and how our economy's doing. If you look at the closeout of fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, we brought in six million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, which is right around the ballpark of what we typically bring in, we had a couple of years in the seven million, we're not sure why, but some of that got pulled back, we believe, at some point when we had that negative impact. It may have been in the state, at the state level, but it looks like our economy is holding steady as far as grocery receipt tax coming in. In FYI nineteen, there's one, for the month of July, we've received that allocation, and in that allocation, we received eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight from internet sales tax. So, that is something new, where our state wasn't capturing that, and as you may all know, a lot of people are ordering items online through Amazon and other companies, and it's only gross receipts. So, now the state has started capturing that, and they are allocating that back out to communities, so our first payment was eight thousand and some. So, that will really help throughout the years to capture some of that. And then, in your, in your report, we're adding, we're working on adding some more wayfinding signs, we already have the metal frames in storage, but one of the things that we're looking at adding is something to designate where the dog park is. And we find that we have a lot of local citizens that still don't know we have a dog park, and then those staying in our RV parks and our hotels, we'd like to offer that for their use as well, so we'll be putting up some signs designating where that is. I have prepared some information that the staff helped me get from General Nava on the M forty-two, on the end of town, so we have a historical marker, ready to go, to get printed with our additional wayfinding signs, it'll be in the same font and decor that the others are in.
The ones?
Yes. And we continue working closely with Team Sixty-Six to work on marketing the City of Grants and our surrounding areas. We're looking at adding the sixty-six insignias on our exits and entrance into town, and the group talked about really wanting to focus a lot on Route sixty-six and try to market that. We're still exploring the idea of a neon park. I'd like you to know that Grants was selected as one of ten communities across the nation to receive technical assistance for developing our outdoor recreation. The Council of Governments helped us as a group to apply for that technical assistance, and so we'll be having some community forums inviting people to really look at how can we market outdoor recreation and capitalize on that. We're joining efforts with Sebola County and Sebola Trail Alliance to continue to develop additional trails in our county. I continue to be involved with the Mount Taylor Collaborative, in fact, they have a meeting tonight, that they're working on our feedback about the wilderness areas. O'Shea has organized a team that's working on setting up monitors in the chamber, and so, we're planning to put a big monitor right up here, a big TV monitor, one on this wall right here, and then one back there, where others in the audience will be able to display the items that you're looking at, your packet, and other presentations from the engineers, they'll be able to see a little bit better.
What about us, will we be to put our YouTube up ourselves?
We're working on that too. Chris Roybal has explored some options, the church that she attends just set up a camera in the back of the church, and so, she's helping us look at that option. I've asked the staff to get quotes on replacing water lines on Dixie and Davis, we've had probably four or five water leaks in that area, so Mark and his team are working on getting us some quotes. We are possibly gonna have to look at Sergeant Devine, that area soon, because they've had quite a few lately.
That place looks like Baghdad, guys.
Yes.
What, what's that?
It looks like Baghdad, like there's bombs, boom, boom, grenade launches are hitting all through there, man, with all the holes they dug.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's bad.
I thought Council Reynolds had a great suggestion at one of the meetings that, about more reporting from our department head, it's very helpful to you as councilmen and women to hear what's going on, and so, whenever the mayor will allow me to, we'll let them report live, and when not, you'll be getting some written reports, so that we can be better informed. GNAN has collected information on a variety of options for GPS units, and I try to get out more and more to visit the staff and see what they need, but I'm seeing a lot of staff cruising, is what it appears to be, and it appears to be that way, when I'm out, I always see them on the road, and I'm like, well, what's the chance of that? So, I think the GPS units will keep us all honest, and my unit should have one as well.
Everybody.
Everybody, and...
Every cop car, every truck.
It will, you know, show if you're...
Senior, every vehicle in this city.
It'll show if you're driving unsafely, if you have real quick stops, if you're speeding, there's all kinds of stuff, it'll show live footage where you're at at the moment, how long you stay at various locations. So, I've just seen some items that I think that it'll help us keep better track, keep our staff on task. We're looking at decommissioning Maribor Park and Kiwanis Park, we've had a lot of drug issues in those areas, and we're not doing a very good job of keeping them presentable, and we feel like those neighborhoods can come to our parks downtown here, and so, Mr. Windhorse is contacting the neighbors to see if they have an objection.
Well, it was, it will be the drug dealers in the neighborhoods that are using those parks.
Yeah.
Because they live right there close, and that's one of those things that we'll put Mr. Mottis on.
So, we'll put something in the paper as well to just, you know, let people know and see if there's strong objections to it.
Does everybody know where Kiwanis and Maribor Park is?
On the hill.
Yeah, they're up on the lava, one's up, up here above by, back over that big two-story house, Maribor Park's down here by McDonald's, sits up on the hill, if you go there, you'll find syringes and all kinds of good stuff there, about every time you go.
O'Shea's working on ordering the urn wall for the cemetery, we're thinking if we can start utilizing urn walls, that will be able to accommodate more gravesites in the future as space becomes sparse. And then, she's also working on how we can make the front entrance more appealable. If you look at it, our cemetery's beautiful, but the front entrance has that ugly white piping, and I asked our staff to paint it, and it looks better, but it's still ugly. And I think it just doesn't match how beautiful our cemetery is, and we're not looking at to spend a lot of money, Mark asked me, "How much can I spend?" I said, "Maybe ten thousand." So, just a little bit to spruce it up, make it look nicer.
You might wanna send Mark for a ride out to look at entryway from Sammatail Cemetery. Salazar Brothers did it there at the mine, and it didn't cost much at all.
It wasn't much for them.
Yeah.
Is it like a stone wall?
It's all iron.
All iron.
It's all wrought iron, it's been curved, and Sammatail Cemetery, nice and pretty on it. Their cemetery doesn't look bad, but their entryway looks great.
Right.
The entrance is really, yeah, the entranceway is really nice.
Okay. And GNAN's calling other communities, she's gathered a lot of information, we'll start reviewing, but we're comparing water sewer and trash rates, so that we can see, you know, are we gouging our customers, are we right in the ballpark, and then...
What you've got to remember about that, when you do that, GNAN here, you've got to remember the increases we put on for abatements.
Yes.
Okay, and that's gotta be separate, you gotta separate that when you prepare the bill, because that was an abatement tax, it was only for abatements, you can't include that as part of their water bill, because it's separate.
Okay, yeah, we'll keep that in mind. And then, the projects department has applied for a grant to do the water rate study, just to look at, as we go through the years, what do we need to charge in order to pay for what it costs us?
Exactly.
To treat water, to provide the service.
Have you had a lot of complaints on the Ubers or something like that?
We did initially, but that's kinda died out.
Yeah, I remember at first, everybody was, "Oh, the water."
And you didn't even have an emitter yet, yeah. So, you know, we learned that... I wish they would have warned us that we should have never done this in the summer, of course, that's when you have to do it, because everybody's water's higher in the summer, right?
Well, that was a problem, see, everybody got new meters, it's empty, and I cut the bill.
That's right, Cindy gave you hers.
Oh, that's funny.
Any questions?
Any questions for the manager?
I really like the department head report.
Good.
I really enjoy reading them and finding out what they're doing.
I like for it to be present.
So, we'll do a little one up. Right, yeah, good ideas, Cindy, I, it made me realize it's important, I know what they're doing, but it's important for you all to know all of that.
I'm in trip with council, Sidney.
Okay, first off, kudos goes to this time, New Mexico Gas Company, and their, the staff that went to my neighbor's house, that subsequently came to mine and painted my meter, without me having to do much, except peek my head out and wave them over. They're very nice, it's very good when the company is very receptive to the clientele. So, kudos goes to New Mexico Gas, not the COs, not the board of directors, but the people who work with public. The other kudo goes to, oh gosh, the City of Grants, and Mr., what's his name, Mr. Tashina and his attempts to keep the water from the giant pond that is in District Three on Mount Taylor Nash. So, did a very good, doing pretty good, really good. First time in like twenty-two years. The other thing is, I was inside the skate park on Saturday morning, and there weren't any syringes. There were cigarette butts, and there were some weeds and stuff, but there weren't any syringes, and it actually was looking pretty good. So, other places may have some, I haven't found any in the dog park, but you know, there's other locations that do have syringes, and that's not so cool. Other than that, that's about it.
Manny?
I've got some for the paving crew here in the Grants area, they've done an excellent job on all the side streets, and the city's looking really good, and they're dedicated and really working, you don't see three guys and one shovel, we see three shovels and one guy, so that's a good thing. The other thing is, I've got complaint from Balsam, where the people are driving through there early in the morning and late in the afternoon, the speed bump is not working.
Because there's a hole through it.
There's a hole.
I don't know why the hell they put it there, it's stupid.
So, I went out there monitoring at seven-thirty in the morning, and they're, and they are traveling like crazy, I went back at three-thirty, and these people are driving forty miles an hour through there, we need to do something with that speed bump.
Yeah, like turn it off, put a new one.
Like the old ones.
They were complaining about that one because it was too abrupt, so we put the prefab one, and the cutouts are for the EMS vehicles.
No, they're...
Rick?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of things, Julie, I'm glad you're here, I just wanted to say again, thank you for, you and your staff for working on the baseball field out there, that's what I get, so...
Thank you.
Thanks for, I know it was a lot of work for you and your group, so, yeah, thank you.
And I want to thank you for sending out the crew whenever we needed them, because we were shorthanded and we were getting desperate, so thank you for going out and assisting with that.
Sure, thanks for helping there.
It helps, yeah, we go ahead.
Right, right. Team effort, guys, worked out a lot.
The other thing is, I've been approached by some of our constituents out there, namely Carrie and Cindy Roberts, you know, after that major rainstorm we had, their property along their street was getting washed out, not just their property, but their wall, the sidewalk is almost deteriorated, and that drain that they have in front of their house is not working.
That's called a dry well, guys, and every place that they put them in, they work for about a year, and then they fill up with dirt, it's the same thing with that one right there by your city's house, you know? They work great for the first year and a half, but after that, and it's, it's a waste of freaking...
Yeah, so, Mark, we need to do something there, we need to, you know, find out who we need to talk to as far as engineering.
Make flow.
Yeah, we need to get that revenue taken care of.
Definitely, we're looking at that whole, is this thing on? Can you hear me? Uh, we're looking at the whole area, and looking at the master drainage plan to see what we decide.
Because Mason Boulevard's higher than the side streets, and, I mean, so there's no way for the water to get out of that. That's why when Joe would give the suggestion, we put that dry well in there, I agreed with him, because the one was working so well by your house. But like, three months later, that one quit working. Okay? And that's what they were wanting, if you want First Street, was put dry wells up and down First Street. I told them, that ain't never happening, guys. Okay? And that's why, First Street's taking a little bit of time, but we're getting it right, guys. We're not gonna do something stupid, they're all gonna pay for later. Because these forty thousand dollar dry wells, that's forty thousand dollars that we just wasted, that we could have used to pave, to put a concrete gutter, to do something else with. So no more dry wells, because they don't work, period.
So what can we do? Is that something we can utilize the sewer drains for that?
You can't tie in stormwater to sewer, because the sewer has gases in it. And so, it gives and takes.
And sometimes, the sewer, the water does get into the sewer system. Right. And, I mean, there's, you know...
Sometimes it happens, but the right way to do it would be to create a pumping station. If you don't have the elevation, order, create underground. And we have a plan for Mesa, but it's gonna be Sebola. Everything, all the best solutions, God's love, right?
Yeah, right, but...
So, I do have a temporary fix for the Carrie family, in the meantime. And I'll share that with you offline. And so, we'll try something inexpensive, and hopefully, that brings some relief.
Okay.
But long-term plan?
Do we have to consider long-term?
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah, these temporary plans only work for a little while, man. We gotta fix it long-term.
Yeah, one more thing. You know, I've seen some of the marketing things we have done before the golf course. You know, with some of the cards that are being passed out to citizens around the state.
Yeah, I've been passing them out, man.
Yeah, me too. And not just that, but, you know, some of the magazines, and of course, the relay signs. Oddly enough, I was on my, on my phone where I use, it's called Eighteen Birdies, and you can download and get information, GPS for the golf courses that you play. And I scrolled through there, and it said, come play the Coyote in Grants. I'm like, where'd you get that? So...
Right over there. See, Chris, stand up, Chris. That's where you get that type of stuff, right there, bro.
So those cars do work, because I was at a store in Albuquerque, an electrical company. And they ordered, they was from Grants, and they said, look at this car. Someone gave a car from the mobile.
What's electrical company, was it? Probably me, I passed out four of them over there.
Just so y'all know, next week at the Bloom Fiesta, there will be six thousand grants of brochures, rec cards go out, that all offer a free round of golf. So I'm anxious to see...
How many we get?
How many we get, yes. And, and you know, we might not get them this year, but next year. You know, hey, they were offering that, because I didn't put an expiration date on it.
Yeah. Well, they're spending money here, they can play our golf course.
Yes.
Stay in our hotels, so, thank you.
Fred?
I just got one thing to say. You guys know I've been out of town for a while. And I was, I got a phone call. So I called Laura and Mark, a lot of them, to get them on my back. Because they said they've been having no water, water leaks, and stuff like that. They took care of it, and I'm like, thank you, guys. It was, you know, you know, it was...
Thanks.
Yes.
You're welcome. I got a couple of things. First one is a Sebola citizen. Sebola citizen did an abatement story, and did not contact the one person on this council that ran on abatements, is still on this council, and is the mayor. Instead, they contacted the mayor that wasn't even on the council when we passed the abatement ordinance. Is there anything else that we did? Laura remembers, because when I was running for office as a councilman, I went over there and I told her, "I'll tear down those apartments over there, elect me." Those were the first buildings way forward down. Okay? So please, Sebola citizen, do a little homework, man, check it out. Some of us are still here, that did some of those good things way back then. And we're still doing good things, even though a lot of people write a bunch of crap in the paper that ain't true. But that's okay. The next one I got, Marteshima. Rumors flying, the mayor's mad at Marteshima. Who's ever starting this crap? Quit it. If I got a problem with Marteshima, or Laura Hadamio, or anybody else working here, I'll call you. And we'll have a discussion, okay? It's never gonna, you're never gonna hear something out of my mouth from him, or from him, or from any employee, except Laura, okay? So that goes for every employee we have out there, period. Okay? The last one I got, uniforms in meetings. I remember, I thought about your comments for two weeks now. The uniforms that I wore, United States Marine Corps uniform, corrections department uniform, taught me to always be flexible, to adjust, adapt, and overcome, because if not, people die. Okay, so I'm sorry you're so stringent. But one of the main reasons that I am doing this with the meetings is because if I can't make the meeting, there's not gonna be a meeting, because I'm not gonna have the mayor pro temp trying to give away money in the public comment section of the meetings. Okay? Period. So that's why we're doing things this way. Okay, if you'll notice, what O'Shea put out, an advance notice for everybody when the meetings are. If anybody needs a meeting changed, any of you do, so that you can be here, call me. And we will make arrangements for you to be at the meetings. It's called being flexible.